Are your mics all on?
Yeah, nope, mine wasn't.
Okay.
Any councilor concerns or concerns about items on consent?
Can we ask questions or talk about, would that be appropriate for like the PGE thing coming up today to talk, ask questions about that?
The PGE thing coming up?
During tariff? During tariff, thank you.
Yeah, when we get to it.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's on our discussion topic for a little later this morning, or this Anybody have any concerns about consent items?
I don't, Mark's here though.
Mark's here now, okay, that's good. The Tyler Contract ERP, those are consent items.
They are on for discussion for work session.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so any other councilor concerns? All right, let's jump in then, to our first scheduled item, the Tourism Promotion Business and Marketing Plan. Good evening, Mayor. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mark Ottenhead, Public and Government Affairs Director, who acts as staff for the Tourism Promotion Program, but we have a special guest tonight. Darren Harmon, who besides being the GM of Wilsonville's Family Fund Center, Bill Winkles, is also the Chair of the Tourism Promotion Committee, and we appreciate him taking the time out to be here tonight, so thank you. The item on the agenda for tonight is adoption of a resolution that in effect adopts the business plan that has been developed by the Tourism Promotion Committee. I actually do have a little PowerPoint show here that I could bring up here real quickly. We're, slideshow from the beginning. So, this is basically the next year's business plan for the Tourism Promotion Program. We call it a five-year action plan and annual one-year implementation plan, so basically it has more detail what we're going to do over the next year, but it gives us a five-year target for which we're aiming. And then the plan is implemented in part through a marketing plan, which we call basically a Tourism Promotion and Destination Services Plan. So technically, you're adopting both the business plan and the marketing plan, and the marketing plan is fulfilled by a contract or professional services agreement with a company named Velocity Tourism LLC. I don't, it doesn't seem like it, well, there we go. The committee has by charter seven voting members who appeared or were involved in this past year, and will they start? For some reason, my clicker is not working. Is there, if there's another clicker I can use? Jeff Brown, Jeff Brown is the, used to be the General Manager of Holiday Inn Wilsonville, he's now the General Manager of Hotel Eastland in Portland. And for some reason, it's being very slow. Well, I was going to tell you who the committee members were, but for some reason, it doesn't seem like it. Oh, there you go. Oh, thank you, yeah. Darren Harmon, who is here, is the Chair of the Committee. Al Levitt is a former City Planning Commissioner and Bike Club Coordinator. David Stead, General Manager of Langdon Farms Golf Club, who did resign this past year. Brandon Roman, CEO of Oaks Amusement Park, formerly with Evergreen Aviation Museum. Dave Pearson, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee, and he's the Executive Director of the Water Speed Motorsports Museum, and Beth Price, who is with Holiday Inn in Wilsonville, doing Director of Sales and Marketing. We also have ex officio advisory members on the committee, which includes representatives from Clackamas County Tourism, Washington County Visitors Association, the Wilsonville Area Chamber of Commerce, the City of Wilsonville Parks and Recreation Department, and City Councilor Charlotte Lehan, who is a liaison to the committee. Over the past year, the committee has awarded approximately $45,000 in grants to various programs for both the Cities Program and the Clackamas County Community Partnership Program. For the $25,000 that was awarded this past year, Fund in the Park received $9,000, Brewster Community received funds, Wilson Arts and Cultural Council, the Rotary Foundation, and as well as the Wilsonville Bicycle Events for the new Salmon Cycling Classic, now in its second year. The committee also awards county tourism funds, including for again, the bicycle events, the Mishi We Run, and the Wilsonville Lacrosse Tournament that occurred in June. The committee has overseen working with the consultants branding of the Explore Wilsonville. Originally, we termed it Visit Wilsonville, and the chamber suggested Explore might be more appropriate, and the committee agreed with that, and so we're now going out as Explore Wilsonville. We've developed branding guidelines, a playbook for marketing activities. For some reason, this slide is repeating, and we'll skip this one. One of the biggest activities was to develop a website. The tourism development strategy indicated that we needed an authentic and real online presence for Wilsonville tourism, rather than relying on Yelp or other sites. So the development of a website has been a major component. The most popular component of the website is the events section, as one might guess. Social media has been a big part of this. There's a Facebook page, and we are increasingly generating more web traffic through organic searches and through links through social media. There's also a fair amount of advertising, both in print and online, with Travel Oregon, with Oregon's, the Oregon Travel Department, and other, even Portland, Travel Portland. There's been a focus on creating local day-long pocket trips, with the idea being that people stay in Wilsonville, and there's a set of 12 different themed pocket trips with local itineraries that have been developed in conjunction with the committee and the consultants who are advising us on marketing. These are the 12 different ones. They cover a wide variety of arts, culture, practical things, shopping, so a nice fun variety, outdoor recreation, indoor. This is an example of one of the pocket trip itineraries, featured with fun, Family Fun in Wilsonville. One of the special projects, you may recall, the committee is undertaking special projects each year as part of trying to develop a very robust tourism development strategy. Over the past year, we've been now completing a visitor profile study. We just got the winter results in, and so we're going to be using this to help guide our, and target our advertising and promotion to be more focused. The survey has revealed interesting information, some of which you would have guessed, but some of which you might be surprised. It turns out that Seattle Tacoma is maybe our second largest source of visitors to Wilsonville. We have a fair number, though, from obviously in-state, but also from California, from Arizona, Idaho, so it's quite an interesting divergent range, and again, it gives us a better idea of what markets to advertise or target for both social media and other kinds of advertisements. Similarly, how are people staying? Well, many people, when they come here, they actually stay with family and friends, or they may be tent camping on RV somewhere in the area, and they come to Wilsonville. So part of what we want to do is convert more people to being overnight lodging guests here in Wilsonville. You can see that overnight visitors do tend to stay more in paid commercial lodging, but full-time residents tend to invite their friends and family to stay with them, as one might expect. Again, here's some interesting information, and some of this shows you that amenities like parks, which residents love, are also very attractive to visitors, both our day visitors and our overnight visitors. Of course, you can see that our overnight visitors tend to eat out more often than others, which makes sense. They also like to engage in shopping activities, so it gives us a really good sense of what the overnight visitor is looking for in terms of what motivates him or her to do different The special project for this upcoming year, Parking Recreation, has budgeted $100,000 to conduct a study of a multi-use facility with a potential hotel addition. This would be a special facility that could be used as sports tournament for one day, live performance the next, so it would be completely multi-use facility, which is something that the Tourism Committee has been very interested in, and members of our community in general have also expressed an interest in. Velocity Tourism LLC will be the firm that undertakes our marketing plan. The firm that we were using, Vertigo Marketing, dissolved just as we were getting ready to renew the contract for the next year. So we asked the two partners of the former firm to submit proposals. The committee chairs, myself and staff reviewed these, and we chose Velocity as being in the best interest of the city, and Chair Harmon particularly noticed the very strong team that Velocity had assembled for conducting our work. This will be a six-month contract, and then we will go out for an RFP this summer to fully vet the appropriate tourism promotion services. In terms of the budget, this is just a basic breakdown in terms of using funds for both print collateral, online, social media, and this was all in your packet, included in your packet in more detail. In essence, that's in a nutshell, and I would actually add one thing. The committee asked to include in your packet a letter, a memo from the committee to the council, supporting your efforts, looking at arts, culture, and heritage strategy, and also encourage you to consider this concept of potentially adding a position to assist with tourism promotion and other cultural affairs that may develop. I don't know, Darren, if you want to add anything to my long spiel here?
Well, as you know, when we started this years ago, to get this going, it's been really nice to see the website develop, and it encompassing also the events that were in the city, not just make it focused on getting that outside traveler here. We did take into consideration anything that could happen with events in the city, because even in those events that happen here, that actually will bring people in. Of course, tourism is focused on getting people 50 miles away and staying overnight, but as you saw in those surveys, people like our parks, and I think people really do like our few events that happen, Fun in the Park, the concerts, those things, so it was fun to go through all that, so we appreciate you guys putting this committee together.
So council, questions or observations? I'm curious, how have we decided to evaluate success? Are we talking about the heads and beds thing as the only parameter? Are we talking about any other kind of analytics to judge whether we're being effective?
Excellent question, Mr. Mayor. In anticipation of your question, I brought up our evaluation performance criteria, which are indeed in your packet, and you are correct, growth in transient lodging tax revenue is a primary consideration. At the same time, we also get data called STR, Smith Travel Research Reports, which show us our occupancy, our real occupancy, and we have a comparable city, which we use as Troutdale, on the edge of the metropolitan area, has a fair business community on interstate highway, and so we're able to compare our metrics of occupancy with another city in the Portland metro region to see how we're doing. We also look at website traffic to explorewilsonville.com, and that includes how many people are just getting there through what's called an organic search. They just type in Wilsonville, and they land on our website, and that's been one of the major workings, the promotion consultants I've been working on is called SEO, Search Engine Optimization, so that we appear. Similarly, we do social media engagement, and we can count those impressions on ads and on clicks-throughs to our website. There's overall campaign impressions, so when, when you run a campaign, like say for the pocket trips, you might run on several different target audiences, maybe different websites, Sunset Magazine, Facebook, et cetera. What are the, what are the campaign impressions that you generate? You can track that. And again, what is the referral traffic from the tourism website to our stakeholders? So for example, we have links to Family Fund Center, businesses in and around Wilsonville. How can we see what kind of traffic we are sending to our stakeholders? And finally, what is the lead generation? Leads come from like Ads and Via, which is the AAA magazine. They can come through online or print medium, and we track all of those. In your packet was a sample quarter one 2019 report that shows you the kind of metrics that are gathered and that we are now beginning to build. Part of our issue is our website only launched last year, and then we tweaked it and redid it a bit to according to the new branding guideline, which launched in September. So our website has been live for just about a year, not quite, so we're still in the process of building up that bank of data to know how to execute in the best way possible.
Seems like a big piece of the coming one-year plan is the evaluation of the idea for an event center.
Yes.
And, and we would expect to have that feedback by?
The end of the fiscal year, I believe.
End of fiscal, okay.
The Parking Rec Department, I understand, anticipates it will be about a one-year process. By the time they go out for an RFP, get the firm in, get the study conducted, and then come back with some results. This was already approved in the Parking Rec Budget that the council adopted.
Any other questions? Comments? Councilor Akval.
I was curious about that piece too, a little bit timing, but also who would be doing that work, because I understood, you know, it was clear from the packet, the work that Vertigo, now Velocity, is doing.
Correct.
It looked like much more the management at the website, and you know, some of that work there.
Correct.
But this study about the feasibility for the event center is totally.
Totally separate.
Different.
Correct. Yeah, you're correct. The Visitor Profile Study was managed by Velocity Tourism on our behalf.
Okay, so they did the survey results that?
Yes, or they worked with another consultant company to get the results. In this case, the Parking Rec Staff will be leading the effort to get the consultant firm on board.
Okay, for the feasibility.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I was, I was curious who the players would be on it. So we'll be getting some sort of updates, I assume, on how that all rolls out in time, and who the people?
Probably, I would guess, next quarter.
Okay, okay.
So, is, the website is live now?
Yes, explorewilsonville.com.
And, and who, who updates it?
The tourism consultants do. We have a little bit of an odd situation here where we have a 15-day gap between the time when our contract expired and our new contract begins.
Doesn't look quite up to date.
You have to go through the months. Continuous events that run continuously appear at first, so when you first go to events, you might see Farmer's Market in May listed. If you jog down a couple pages in, you start picking up on other events that are occurring. I noticed that today also, and I was going to suggest that they see if they can redo that, so that those continuous events that are always happening don't automatically appear at the top.
What, was it, where it says?
Repeat.
Exactly, so like the Farmer's Market is a perfect example of a repeating event.
Just hard to know what.
Doesn't seem very user.
It could use a little more work, that's, yes.
So if I click on each one of these, it goes to a different date, or it goes to?
A different event, I believe.
I think we're going to be very pleased with the new, the new marketing company. I don't think it goes anywhere right now.
Supposed to.
They're just pictures.
There's pictures, okay.
Oh, there are pictures that are placeholders, yes, there are placeholder pictures.
So it's in, it's in process?
Yeah, although it should be, it should be pretty good, so if we have an issue, then I gotta go deal with that.
That's why we need a.
That's why we're talking about that other item.
Yeah.
Getting Mark off of this. His bandwidth is full.
Councilor West, did you have another question?
I was just curious about what were the big, I don't know if you guys have, the board knows, like I've talked about, what are the biggest opportunities to increase tourism in the Wilsonville area in the future? Like where are we going, and where can we improve?
Well, information, one of the best things is just, we need a better website, we need more information. I would say that's always the best thing, is more information to make it easier for people to find what they need. Secondly, our Visitor Profile Study did show that there was a gap in our lodging facilities. We have no high-end lodging currently. With the new facility under construction, we will now have a four-star hotel rounding out our options from everything from, I guess, one to two stars all the way to four stars, and so there'll be a wide variety of lodging options, and we understand that from a Visitor Profile Study that that's of great interest to our visitors.
Do you know if Airbnb and VRBO, sorry, are, is there a desire for more of that in our region and area?
I'm not clear, we have looked on websites, most of the VRBOs are outside of Wilsonville city.
Just outside, yeah.
Yeah, Councilor Lehan is one of the few who actually has one inside Wilsonville.
There are a number of Airbnbs, but those tend to be condos or rooms and.
In a house.
In a house. I think I'm still the only cool house inside the city.
We've not heard much, we've not heard from visitors' demand for that, but we have heard definitely the need for a higher-class hotel.
Have you guys heard anything about tying us closer to the wine, or just right outside wine community?
Yes, so our approach is a regional approach, where we basically market attractions and events 25 miles south, east, and west of us, and position Wilsonville as the place to stay overnight.
You do all of them.
So you got to take in wine country, take in heritage, agricultural, farm-to-table events, et cetera, make Wilsonville your overnight stay.
Terrific.
One comment I would have is, I'm the old generation now, I guess, I may not be a good example, but when I've traveled, I frequently just start out saying, well, gee, what is there to do in such and such a place? And I would never, I don't know, never, if I'm visiting a state where I'm not familiar, I wouldn't necessarily be looking at one particular town, I'd be like, well, in this area, what are some interesting things to do? So I would hope that we've evaluated how we would come up on that kind of a search, not just how many people are, are, you know, tickling Wilsonville to see, you know, what can you do in Wilsonville, but some broader kind of a search.
The marketing, the marketing crew, one of the things that they're charged to do is to make sure they utilize Travel Oregon, Travel Portland.
Oregon's my hotel.
Washington County and Clackamas Counties websites, so they will feed to us, so if somebody's searching for certain things, river activity, Wilsonville's going to pop up. You're looking for wine country items that were going to pop up, because like you said, the wine country is underserved for anywhere to stay, and we're perfectly situated to be the hotels for going on a wine tour, because there's nothing other than Newburgh to go stay at, or you're going all the way out to McMinnville, and we have better hotels, so.
One minute. Got a tight agenda.
We're fine.
All right, well, thank you very much. If there's no other questions, we will move along then.
Thank you very much.
Tyler Contract Award, Mr. Stone.
Good evening. All right. Got lots of documentation here, so bear with me for a second here. All right, all right, good evening. I'm Andy Stone, I'm the IT Director for the City of Wilsonville, and I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about the contract with Tyler Technologies for Tyler's Munis and Intergov. As many of you know, Eden is our current ERP system. ERP is a kind of a generic term for Enterprise Resource Planning software. For the city, this means that it's the software that underpins all of the daily functions for the city, everything from financials, permitting, and utility billing. Excuse me, the, so Eden was originally implemented around, between 2001 and 2004. It is a, before Eden, financials were run on a program called Therefore, and a lot of the community development functions were actually done on paper. So we had a successful implementation in the early 2000s, and things have gone very well since then. Originally, or Tyler Technologies bought Eden in around 2004 and has maintained it up until this point, and we've had a very good working relationship with them, and it has, it has done well, but it is starting to show its age. It is a little bit of an older technology, doesn't lend itself very well to mobile workflows, that type of thing. There's some cumbersome dated workflows, and while they, they are not dropping Eden, they have acknowledged, they being Tyler, have acknowledged that there isn't really any meaningful development going on with Eden at this point. Tyler does recognize that cities and municipalities have made significant investments in their software, and so they have something called the Evergreen Promise, which gives discounts to entities that are moving to other Tyler products within their portfolio. So back in 2017 and 18, we did a needs and solutions assessment to look at all the different products that were out there for our size city, just to kind of see what was out there and, and what would fit for our city. The assessment concluded that Tyler's newer products, Munis and Intergov, were the best fit for the city. So we have been working, let's take a look at both of them here. So Munis and Intergov, they're both the flagship products for their respective areas. So Munis is core financials, it does everything that our current system does, but it has quite a few updated features and modules associated with it. Same thing with Intergov, it is, it is based around GIS, which is Geographic Information Systems, means that everything is geolocated and ties everything together, not only through Intergov, but also through Munis itself. There's actually quite a few cities and other entities around here that use the Tyler products. They're either on them right now or in the process of implementation going to it. Some of them had Eden before, some of them had other products, but a lot of them are moving to these products themselves. But one of the things that we want to keep in mind is, this is an enormous task. You know, as you could see before, the implementation took two or three years to complete from beginning to end, and even at the end, we were still implementing new features and that type of thing. We understand this, and so we've done a lot of different things to make sure that we are setting ourselves up for success. We did the needs assessment in the, and we came up with Munis and Intergov, but also in that needs assessment, we talked to other jurisdictions about their implementations, about their choices, what pitfalls they ran into, what, you know, where the stumbling blocks were, what worked well, that type of thing. We've put together a steering committee made up of city staff that are directly affected by the project, and all the big decisions go through the steering committee, and we were able to talk them out that way. One of the things that came up, and I will get to this a little bit later, since they kind of go hand in hand, is a lot of the other entities identified a dedicated project manager to help with the implementation, paid huge dividends for, for their projects, and so we'll be talking about that here in a second, too. And then we're also going to be going through. And then we're also going to be going through, um, some ERP change management training. We're going to be working with a group that, um, that does, that, that sees a lot of these ERP implementations for, for municipalities. We're gonna get the core group of people that are gonna be really working on this project and go through, uh, a day-long class of, of really kind of, um, you know, what works, what doesn't, what to expect. We're not sugarcoating it. It is a gigantic project and so kind of get everybody ready for it and getting the right, uh, right area. And last but not least, we actually, we have a lot of staff that were part of the original ERP implementation. They remember what it was like and what, uh, what it really took to get it up and going. Um, and so that, that's a huge wealth of knowledge, so that when we embark on this project, we have, uh, some expertise there, too. So, let's talk about the contract a little bit. So, the contract is a, uh, it's a really rather large document. It's about 150 pages, give or take, that's made up of these three sections: the License and Service Agreement, Statement of Work, and Investment Summary. Before we get too far into it, I want to acknowledge the, um, all the hard work that was put in by the ERP Steering Committee and especially Legal, um, and going back and forth with, with Tyler. Um, there was a lot of, you know, back and forth to get us where we're at right now and, um, uh, Legal did an exceptional job of taking their template and really making it work for the, the needs and everything that we have here at the city. Um, so, the Licenses and Services Agreement is, spells out the general terms of the licensing, the maintenance, the invoicing, indemnification, and other processes. Um, the Statement of Work is more of a, um, lays out the, the scope, the methodology, uh, the roles, responsibilities, and deliverables of the overall project itself. And then the Investment Summary breaks down the cost of the licensing, implementation, data conversion, um, maintenance, optional services, and other components like that. So, there's, you, you all saw the Investment Summary in the, in the packet. It's a, it's a huge document, but this is kind of an easy way to break it down. So, the full cost of, of everything that we're looking at, um, is a little over a, a million dollars. You can kind of think of that as MSRP. That's the, that's the full cost. Uh, with the discounts and various other things that, uh, we were able to negotiate, uh, we took about a little over $350,000 off of that. The other services are made up of, uh, one-time installation fees, custom reporting, post-implementation of modules, um, travel, hardware, th- those types of things. Um, and so if you, if you take the first one, minus the second one, add the third one in there, you come up at, uh, at the million, uh, 63,121. You can kind of see we're actually even a little bit below what the, what the full cost was. Um, we, we pay annual maintenance with Eden right now. Um, the annual maintenance here, um, it will increase by about $26,000 a year, but, um, that's based on some of the new modules that we are getting with the software, or the new software, um, that weren't available, uh, within Eden there. So, that's kind of a high-level breakdown of the, of the contract. Um, I wanted to kind of give you guys the opportunity to ask any questions that you want, uh, about the contract. I also have, uh, a bunch of information about the project manager to roll into after this as well.
Okay. Uh, it sounds like this has been taking a certain amount of your focus time here recently.
I have spent a considerable amount of time on this, rather.
Uh, I wanted to kind of lead in, uh, by talking about perspective a little bit. One of the most notorious news stories over the last some years that has, have happened is stories about municipalities going to implement computer systems and ending up with wildly over-budget expenditures and wildly underperforming assets. And we, we obviously don't want, cannot afford, you know, have no interest in putting ourselves in that kind of a scenario as a city, as a council, as, as, uh, as a group which values, you know, uh, high-quality performance and wanting to be, uh, functional. Uh, and having an interest in being, at least if not on the cutting edge, at least, you know, like we're in the right century here, as we move forward and things continue to change. So, how, you know, uh, Mr. Stone, what is y- your perspective about the challenges that we have seen other cities enter into, whether it's water system, billing systems they've had problems with in places, or overall, uh, I don't know if failure is the right word, you know, uh, underperforming implementations of, of, uh, data systems and, and what, what we're looking at here?
I'd agree. I, I have no interest in a, uh, failure of the, of the system as, as well. Um, so, a lot of the ones that, that grab the headlines, they are, um, they are systems that are, one, they're, they're quite a bit bigger than we are and they are using, utilizing systems that are, they're not, they don't have the blueprint that this system does. The, this implementation, or an implementation like this has been done many times, even in our, in our area here. This is not a, you know, we're not treading water on, or we're not, uh, trying new water on, on some of this kind of stuff. We have, uh, there are some very set procedures in this process that will, um, that should map us out to, uh, success as far as that goes. Some of those ones that you, uh, uh, mentioned are, are bigger systems that are, they were one-off type of systems that they were building for, you know, for the state, for Oracle, or, or, um, the bigger Portland ones, um, they, they weren't, uh, I'm not saying that this is off-the-shelf, but this is a, um, it's a much more, uh, blueprinted type of a system. Um, so, uh, not only that, but there is a strong, uh, presence within the region so that we, we know what other people have done. We've investigated, um, what a lot of other people have done, either going from Eden to, to these new software programs or other, uh, programs. The other big piece, I think, that's really gonna help us is engaging with the project manager that has, uh, ERP experience. They're, uh, a, they're somebody that can, can work with the Tyler Technologies and with staff coming and working to find the, maybe even redoing some business processes to finding some more efficiencies. Um, there, there are a lot of, a lot of things that we have to, to go off of to, to get us to, to success, but I think also going into it with your eyes wide open, knowing that it is a gigantic project, that, um, it's gonna take a lot of time. We're gonna have to figure out how to, to get it done in the most efficient way. One of the pieces of feedback that we got from other entities was, um, rushing too quickly through an implementation. Um, you know, I've kind of budgeted some time in here that, you know, 18 months for a, for a, a major piece, whereas some will try to get it done as quickly as six months and they ended up having to redo a lot of processes and stuff. So, I, I think that we've, we've done a lot of our due diligence and, and, uh, have a good idea of, of what to expect. There, there's no guarantees, obviously, but there is, um, I feel like we have a good roadmap at this point.
Another thing you could add, Andy, is a couple of cities have been in, kind of us...
Your mic's off.
Sorry. Other cities in the area have been using the product for a while. We worked a lot with, especially Andy, worked a lot with Gresham.
Yep.
I think Oregon City, too. Is that correct?
We, we've talked to, Oregon City is, is implementing the, uh, Intergov portion. They're doing a different Tyler product for the financials. But, um, but yes, we, we've spent a lot of time with, uh, Gresham. We've, um, in fact, they, they helped us out quite a bit on the, on the contract portion of it. Uh, we've talked to, um, Ashland and Grants Pass, were relatively early implementers of the, of the systems and they, they ran into some, some issues and we've, we've kind of figured that out. We've, we've built a lot of things into the contract to, to give us that, uh, ability where they found out that they didn't have enough time for, um, say, report writing or something like that. We've built a lot of services into this contract that are actually, will only be billed if we use them um, just to give us that kind of cushion and that contingency, just in case we, um, we need a little bit more time on a particular, uh, um, area of the, of the implementation.
We also put language in the contract that other cities didn't have to keep their feet to the fire as well. They resisted, but ultimately agreed to.
Sounds trackable.
Um, that's, that's good information and that's helpful to hear. I wondered, one of the things I, I wondered, uh, but it sounds like from your response to your nap's question here is that there is perhaps not a lot of customization that is required for, for the city to, to move to the new product?
The, there, so we're, we're gonna analyze all of the business processes because some business processes, early on, were informed by how the, the older software worked. Uh, this is new software, so we're gonna look at that. There may be some more, um, we're, we're hoping to find a few, um, efficiencies in, in some of that kind of stuff, but that is one of the things that we will look at from, for, in each section. You know, the financial sections will be a lot different than the permitting and, and that type of thing. Um, but the, there shouldn't be, we're hoping that there, there shouldn't be actually like customization that, that's gonna cause issues as we do upgrades, as we, as we go down. Yes.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And then kind of, um, tagged on to that, in, on, oh, it's page 54 of our packet, I think 28 of that section, maybe? It's, but it's under Issue Handling and they, and they talk about the different priority levels and how their, their resolution or response targets are for, for Tyler. I was wondering if, is it like the same support team then that you have been working with before with the prior? And do you really like them and, and do you see rosy...
They have been...
Rosie times in the future because of that?
They have been good to work with. I, it will not be the exact same team, from what I understand. Um, they have been moving some people around. A- as far as Tyler goes, their, their biggest percentage of people who are dedicated to a product is Munus, um, which is our financials. Um, Intergov has quite a bit, too. There, there would be kind of separate support teams for Munus and Intergov because they have their own specialties and stuff. There are some, um, uh, you know, there are some Eden people that will, will stay in, but the, the groups that we are working with to do our implementation are groups that are dedicated in moving, uh, customers from Eden to these, these other products. Um, so they, they know some of the, the challenges that, um, that we have, what, what things maybe don't work as well from going from Eden to, uh, to Munus or, or even to Intergov, that type of thing. So, um, overall, we've been pretty happy with, um, you know, with their response and stuff. I mean, there's, there's always little issues here and there, but, um, you know, it's software, so...
Okay. Yeah, I was, I'm, I guess, just, um, confidence in the company, right?
Yes, yes.
Because, especially moving to something new, there will be an increased need for that sort of support, I would assume.
Yes. And in this contract, actually, we do, especially on the Intergov side, we, uh, because it's a little bit newer to, to some of us, we've got some, um, options in there that, uh, that will help us as we go on. One of the things that we ran into issues with Eden was we tried to do too much too early in Eden and we're gonna really try to focus on getting the core stuff figured out initially and then we are able to, um, uh, enhance those processes as we go once we kind of get a better understanding of, of how it works. And so we have some things in the contract that, that will help us take advantage of that.
Counselor West?
Admittedly, this is not my wheelhouse of expertise. Um, so, a couple of questions, just so I can clarify, I understand how it works a little bit better. Eden is completely outdated and unusable to this point?
It, it's not unusable, but they are, they being Tyler are not, um, making a lot of enhancements to the, to the product. So, one of the areas that we've really noticed that, that it kind of falls down is, uh, some of the, uh, take mobile building inspections.
What does that mean?
So that means like something that a, uh, one of our building inspectors could go out with an iPad or something to, to do some things. The, the current architecture of Eden makes that very difficult, whereas the architecture of the newer software makes it a, an easier process to, to implement.
Is there anything essential that Eden doesn't offer that the new software product does? Like an essential type of, um, function to, for the city to run adequately? That you're worried that Eden just will not be able to do or cannot do anymore?
I, I see it's, everything is trending towards mobile or, or web-based type of, um, uh, you know, like, uh, providing services via the web, that, that type of thing. Um, it, I wouldn't say there's anything critical that Eden isn't doing, but, um, as we kind of diverge and development grows, it's gonna become more and more of an issue, I would say. So, this is something that, um, you know, you can kind of see the writing on the wall is that we're gonna start running into some real bottlenecks. We're kind of running into it already with, like I said, with the, uh, with some of the mobile stuff that, that people are looking for at this point.
And we, we don't currently use Intergov or Munus right now. Is that, am I correct? Like that's, that's, that's the new software that handles two, can you explain to me just a little bit like what's, um, you said Munus, one handles the financials and Intergov handles the functions of the...
Yeah, you can kind of think of, uh, Munus is, is a little bit more, is, is mainly the financial, um, so anything that has to do with billing and, and, uh, budgeting, all that kind of stuff. Utility billing, that type of stuff. Intergov is, is more along the lines of some of the community development processes. So, building permits, planning, engineering, um, that type of thing. So, um, anybody that's coming into a counter to, to get a tree removal permit is currently using Eden, they will be using Intergov in this, in this process, uh, going forward. So Eden was, was, had both of these functionalities built into it. Um, Intergov and Munus are, are considered their flagship products. There was not a, a product that, that did both of those things like, like Eden did at the time. And so that's why, being that they're under the same umbrella, it'll be easier to get them to talk back and forth at the end of the day, reconciling, uh, transactions, that type of thing.
When, is there, can you do, is there, because you said one city had one and not the other? And so is it, just for, I mean, maybe that's not a big price tag for this, but, you know, it is a big price tag, even though like, I don't know if that's a lot for city software or not, I don't know. But is there a way that would make sense for Wilsonville to say, "Hey, we'll implement this one, see how it goes, see how the relationship works out and the changes work. We need this one more than the other one and we can, can we ease into it?" Or is it, "Let's just get the flagship right away, both of them?"
The way that we're gonna do it is, we'll, we need to get the financials built first and kind of get that backbone that everything ties to for the GL, the General Ledger and that, that type of thing. Um, there are ways to make Eden work for that, but there is a lot of overhead, one-time flat files that have to be changed. A lot of, a lot of opportunities for kind of fumbling the ball. Um, by going, at least going with this, um, process that we're talking about, it's integrated in a way. There, there will be a little bit of, you know, um, shuffling some files around until everything is implemented. But, um, going through the needs assessment and looking at it, it seems like this is probably gonna be the best, least disruptive process for the, for the city to, to go through it this way.
I have to, I'm trusting you guys a lot. Do you feel like taxpayers are gonna get a great value for their money based on this price tag and what's being offered?
You know, I'm, I'm pretty close to this project, so I, I feel like, uh, yes, I think this is gonna be a good stepping stone. I think it's gonna be, um, valuable or, or viable for the next 15, 20 years. I mean, the, the current one was, was that way for, for 15 years. I do feel like, um, that this is going to be able to, uh, let us lay the groundwork for offering other services, um, in the future, um, you know, making lives a little bit easier for citizens, you know, bill pay, that, that type of thing. Um, I, I believe of all the options that we looked at in the, uh, uh, needs assessment and everything, I feel like this is a, is the best option for the city.
And the other cities using it are, overall, majority of them are, are happy with the service and the products that they're using. There's some that you talked to?
Yeah. Uh, we've, you know, there's a lot of, you know, any major thing that has some pain and suffering associated with it, but in all the ones that we, we talked to, nobody said that they would do anything different. They, you know, they, they may do some things different in the implementation, but they wouldn't have, they wouldn't go with a different company than, than what they, uh, went with.
Thank you.
In the Tyler, uh, contract, I guess it is the Tyler contract that's in here, I'm on page 22 of 426, Section 8 on Indemnification, Limitations of Liability and Insurance. The question is, uh, maybe for legal, you know, are those limitations appropriate? Have we evaluated, you know, whether we are adequately protected, you know, given the number of limitations on, uh, on Tyler's Section H? Eight in the...
The, um, the indemnification provision was a provision that...
License and Services Agreement?
Yeah. We went back, back and forth on a lot and, um, it kind of started with what we were able to see other cities got and added to that. Um, for a long time, the indemnification was one-way and, and that wasn't going to be acceptable to us. So I feel like we pushed that as far as we possibly could.
Yeah, I, I don't pretend to understand all of that, but I know I sat through a lot of meetings talking about indemnification and, and going back and forth until the point where they, uh, felt comfortable with it.
Yeah. The other thing we did with Tyler that they claimed they had never done with anyone else, and I don't know if that's true or not, is, but one of the biggest issues that we were concerned about is when they've got, you know, this is a national company and they're doing, and it's, it seems like they're, it's the company everybody is, is using right now and so of course you worry, "Do you have the A-team working for you? Do you have the B-team? How long does it take for them to respond?" How long does it take for them to respond? And one of the things that they did not want in the contract, that we wanted in the contract was a time of the essence clause, so that we would actually have a, a grounds for default and, you know, nobody wants to cancel this contract because it's taken forever to put the thing together. But, you know, there are also, besides canceling the contract, there are damage remedies. And so, that was one of, actually, the hardest thing to get even more than the indemnification, I think. And Amanda worked on this too, so if I'm, if I skip over something, let me know. But that was really the last provision that we fought about, and then, and they finally agreed. And other cities in Oregon don't have that, but we have it.
Can you explain what the damage remedication is?
Damage?
Yeah.
Well, so, with the time of the essence, that means if you're supposed to have it done in 10 days, it has to be done in 10 days. It does, it can't slide, otherwise you're entitled to damages. What are those damages? You know, if our system is down for days and we can't bill people, or we can't pay our vendors and our vendors have late charges that they attach to our bills, those are the kind of actual damages that you would have. Now, there are limitations to punitive damages and things like that in the, in the contract that go both ways, but it's important to be able to recover your actual costs. And damages are anything, when you have out-of-pocket expenses that were caused by the other party to your contract, not by you, those are the damages that you're entitled to claim.
They accepted that, or they said they rebuffed it?
No, they accepted that.
They accepted it?
Okay.
I'm sorry, another quick point I failed to mention before is that this is a large dollar amount, but we have been putting money aside over the last, I think it was five years or something like that, and we are, we are well within the, or within the, the number that we have set aside for this and for the project management that we're going to be talking about here in a second.
And I think the other thing, Andy, that we, we maybe didn't mention is when you were talking about the two sides, the Munis and the Intergov side, and we were really starting with the Munis side. But the, the area that Eden's always been the weakest on, as I understand, is the Intergov side, which is the community development side and tracking, time tracking on projects. And so the anticipation here is that this will make community development have them, give them more potential for profitability and timeliness and all of those kinds of things. So it should really help change the way that their workflow moves.
Okay. We're probably spending more time on kind of discussing this, but it is a pretty major kind of a move, and so we want to be, I want to be sure that staff is confident that they are on the track they need to be on, and that this is going to come out successfully and, and produce the kind of movement forward that we are envisioning. Can we, you know, have a little discussion about the, the management contract that goes with this at this point?
The project manager contract?
Yeah. That's next on the agenda.
Yep. Yep. I can, I just kind of built it right into this one, so we can just slide into there. So, building on what, what you were saying, we know this is a, a huge project, we want to do everything we can to make sure that we, we do it right. So, one of the things like I mentioned before that came up in our needs assessment is that multiple entities said that having a dedicated project manager paid significant dividends during their implementation. So, so what we want to do is, you know, come up with a project manager, or, let me back up. There is a project manager that Tyler support, or that provides, but Tyler's project manager is really dedicated to focusing on the Tyler's deliverables, making sure they are delivering what they need to do for that section. The Tyler project manager most likely will also change as we go through the, the process because they're dedicated to their each individual sections. So dedicating a person outside of Tyler that, to help manage our project through that has the city's best interests in mind, is something that, that we were very interested in. It will also lessen the burden on staff that are also trying to get their other projects done during the implementation. The, the project manager will essentially be an independent third party that will help us kind of analyze our business processes and, you know, not just do things because that's how they've always been done. We're going to really look at what, what's available and what we, what we can do. An outside PM also will have the, should have experience of implementing other project, or other ERPs, so that they've seen some of the pitfalls and know where some of these, where the areas that we could fall into trouble. And it's a limited term engagement. We, we have this person during the, during the implementation, but it's, it's not a, a full FTE. So, we put out a RFP on, in May for a project manager. We received three pretty high-quality proposals, and we're very pleased with them. They all had lots of, not only ERP, ERP experience, but municipality experience and other things like that. So, the steering committee that we talked about before reviewed on everything and scored them all, had lots of discussion about it. Ultimately, we chose LEO Consulting. We felt like they had the, the strongest grasp of what it was that we were looking for. They have, they've done several other ERP-type things. They helped Tuolton implement several products in, in the ERP realm quite successfully. The principal, Lisa Yeo, has lots of experience. She has worked with Noma County, the Department of Revenue, City of Tuolton, and various other things. Her company also has access to additional consulting resources that have done this kind of stuff that they can pull in if we need to. Their company is local, so there's no travel costs. The other two had travel costs associated with it, they drove the price up. And last but not least, they, they were the least overall cost. We, it's a little hard to determine exactly what it would cost, so we, we talked to other entities and we came up with a kind of, so an apples-to-apples comparison of an average of 20 hours a week for the duration of the, the project. So we, we set it up as a not to exceed 150,000 per year for, for that type of a thing, for no, no more than three years for the implementation. So, so that, that is, in a nutshell, that's the, the ERP project manager. You guys have any questions?
So, we're anticipating this implementation will be a three-year cycle to get through on the timetable you're proposing, is that...
Yeah. The, the proposal in the, in the contract is a little shorter than that, but like I said, we, we've got it set up so that if we need to take a little bit longer in each section, we can. We don't anticipate it taking, for, for the primary install, any more than three years in the process.
Questions on this approach? They're recommending that we hire this person to be kind of the city's representative throughout the entire implementation, and are convinced that this is the right party to do it, apparently.
We were, we were very pleased with their, and they, they have a lot of experience. We were, feel like they're the right choice.
And our contract with them is structured so that we would have adequate attention from them as we need it?
Yep. Yep. We, we recognize that there are some, some weeks where instead of 20 hours, they may be here 40, or, or even more than that, but it averages out to 20. But yes, the, the contract is, is designed in such a way that we will have the appropriate attention to it. And if anything changes, if anything looks different, we've got things built in there so that they're recognized by both parties that, you know, they're going to need to spend more, more time here or there, that type of thing.
Counsel, anything? Are you comfortable?
I've never heard of this before.
I've never heard of this either.
I just looked it up on Wikipedia.
Of?
ERP. Oh.
It's a generational thing, apparently.
It makes no sense, but whatever. Enterprise resource planning.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a very generic term for, I mean, you can, you can have an ERP in lots of different types of companies. For us, it's, it's basically a software that underpins all the day-to-day functionality.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just read about that.
Okay.
Counselor West?
I guess my, my question is, I didn't, and maybe this is how it's done, like, once again, like this whole process is, is probably just, people who aren't doing it all the time are experts in this, is a little foreign, but why? So we wouldn't use their project manager, we need to hire an inter, someone to represent us to make sure that the rollout goes smoothly and we're advocated for? Almost kind of like a, I think I'm an attorney when I think of this, but I know they're not an attorney, but that's kind of how I think the representation from it, am I correct? And, and so we wouldn't be, we would hire somebody basically to roll this out for us?
They, they would work hand-in-hand with our staff as, as we go, but their, their sole focus is, is, is working with not only Tyler, but us to, to roll it out in the most efficient and the best way possible. Because we're kind of setting the groundwork for the next 15 years on how we do certain things and how it all, how it all goes out. It, it takes a huge amount of time, and with everybody else, especially with all the different departments that are focusing on, on, you know, their own things, you know, building has their things, financial, or finance has their, their things, this person is, will help see the entire project as, as we go through and help make it smoother, because we do have a lot of integration. We're capturing fees at the front desk for, for building, it has to get into the general ledger. But the people in building may not be privy to the, some of the discussions we've had in the, in the financial implementation.
I think another way to put it is, Andy will know all about the system. He's not the one they need to help, but, but he's going to be running his department as will his regular staff be doing all of their regular duties. And so then when Tyler is here trying to train the building code staff, just for example, they can't be down there all day helping do the training, so that person will be there to see if somebody's having trouble getting it or working with Tyler and the client to make sure that the communication is good.
Doesn't Tyler have a motive to make sure their product is rolled out successfully? Are we duplicating what they're already offering? I don't know if I see, and I could be wrong, if you could explain to me why it's total, is it because you said they were so national, you feel like they wouldn't be able to provide the hands-on, or I'm kind of...
I think they will, but some, but sometimes when you're working with tech, you know, tech people think this way, and like, I think this way.
I'm not a tech person.
Yeah. So, if you're not a tech person, this person is sort of interfacing, saying, okay, what he's trying to tell you or what she's trying to do is, if you do this. So it's just sort of somebody that helps kind of walk you through the process, which is what, you know, like, when I'm, when I can't figure out how to work my computer, I'm like, Andy, help! And then they come running, but they won't be, you know, they're, they're going to need a little bit of backup, and this person is really their backup.
The feedback we got when talking to other entities is that this person really helps with, you know, the, the Tyler person comes on board and they're, they've got their agenda and they've got stuff that's ready to go. This person will be on-site weeks ahead of time, helping iron out processes, making sure that we know exactly what we want to do to get it into the new system as efficiently as possible. And it just helps smooth out the entire process, that they can, they can talk to Tyler, they can talk to city staff, and, and it will, it should help with the implementation, because it is such a critical implementation, we want to make sure we get it right.
Okay.
And Tyler is here from out of town, too, so time, their time is their money. And so if we can make the process run smoother and quicker for them, then that makes the contract less expensive.
We got to roll.
Okay. We good? All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next up is water rate review, Ms. Roedker. The project manager we've used most oftenly on the big capital improvement projects.
Owner's rep.
Owner's rep, you know, is another way. When we've done the water plant, you know, or done the wastewater plant, we've, we've hired our manager from our side to oversee, and, I mean, is that a good analogy, or is that...
Kind of. Just a little different. What we're hiring is a subject matter expert to interface between us and Tyler, and also to help our staff. I think Barbara stated it pretty accurately.
Okay.
One of the things on that is, when we did the utility billing install in Eden, they came to us and said, how do you want it installed? And we would ask them, well, what's the best practice? And they would go, well, how do you want it installed? So it took us a really long time, and then we ended up doing the exact same thing that we had done with our old system. So I think that this person will listen to us, and Munis is supposed to bring best practices with them, with them, so that we have options to say, oh gosh, maybe we don't do it this way, it'd be better if we did it that way.
Okay.
So I think that person being really important. Okay. Water rate study.
Oh, yeah. You got it, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so this evening we're going to have a quick presentation, presentation on our water rate study. I have with me Doug Gabbert and Wyatt Zimbleman from FCS Group. They're the ones who've been working with us on this. We have two themes that we're going to look at. First is our cost of service analysis. This is where we determine what class of customer should be responsible for paying for, you know, or generating the income that we need. And the second will be to take a look at a possible rate structure change for our residential customers.
All right. So I am Doug Gabbert, I am joined by Wyatt Zimbleman, who's been working extensively with city staff, but this is the first time we get to have him here in person. So we are lucky to have him here. So we have several components of the rate study for water that we want to share with you this evening. First, we're going to go through the revenue requirement, which answers the question, how much revenue should be raised? And that, that comes, the output of that is a series of across-the-board rate increases. We then dig a little deeper and we ask, well, is every customer class paying its fair share? That's the cost of service allocation in the middle. And then finally, once we got that sorted out, we ask, well, is this rate structure really the rate structure you want to use, or might there be a better answer? Hint, there is. But let's start at the beginning. The revenue requirement analysis, how much total money does the water, do water rates, should they generate? We begin with a whole scat of assumptions that we use in our modeling, assumptions about annual cost inflation, including PERS, that is getting much bigger every other year, construction costs, salaries and benefits, other operating costs. We also escalate your customer base, 2.9% per year. That's a high number, but it is absolutely real because we vetted it with staff and history extensively. But we do have, we're all, we are building in an assumption, just to be conservative, that per capita consumption will decline at 1% per year to sort of tamp down that 2.9% just in case we find that that customer growth is not sustainable over a long term. We wanted to protect you a little bit. Our rate revenue, moving to the right side, is based upon fiscal '18 actuels, which is a little long in the tooth at this point, but we also have information from the '19 budget, which has just passed, but staff has been involved in vetting all these numbers, and so we think that we have it dialed in pretty good. Debt issuance is going to be a part of this, and so we have to make some assumptions about what that's going to cost you, and so we're going to assume an interest rate of 4% and a term of 20 years, 1% cost of issuance. So the capital needs really drive a lot of what's going on in the revenue requirement, and you see a graphical representation of the costs in each year. It's a little lumpy, as capital expending tends to be, but we can handle that through the judicious use of debt, which will help us to smooth out some of those peaks. You'll notice in the first bullet point there, the, the grand total of those project costs for, for those 20 years is about $185 million. In that second bullet point, you will notice three tranches of debt issuance, which, if my math is right, is about $34 million over that period. So it's a small fraction of that capital cost being bonded for, and a lot of that is going to have to be paid for in cash, but I think we'll find that that is the right balance for Wilsonville. And so you can see graphically here, kind of, kind of what we're proposing, the dark stack at the very bottom of the graph are your operating expenses, and the black line that is just under the top of the graph, you can see that that, that line representing your current revenue under current rates is... under current rates is plenty sufficient for your current operating expenses, even as those operating expenses escalate over time, but you'll notice they don't leave you with enough money to pay for the debt service and the capital costs in future years, and that's ultimately what is driving those rate increases. So the bottom line for the revenue requirement analysis you'll see from that bullet point at the bottom, is we need across-the-board increases of 3% from 2020 to 2024, you can let that rest for a few years, between 25 and 28, and then pick up again 3% per year, 29 through 34. For the work that we do, everybody, you know, if it's your bill, we know that this is not necessarily pain-free, but this is pretty mild, as far as the revenue requirements that we see. Now you could just leave it at that, and implement those across-the-board rate increases if you wanted to, and it would probably mostly work out okay, but we suggest digging a little deeper into a cost of service analysis, so that we can look more deeply at the equity between customer classes. To show you in a graphical format how we do that, we begin with the revenue requirement that we just figured out, and we take those costs, that annual dollar figure that we're trying to raise, and we allocate it out to different functions. These are different ways, different functions of the water utility that serve the public, and we look at individual line items in your budget, we look at your existing plant in service, and we put all those costs in one of those buckets. And then, we look at your individual customer classes and ask, okay, how does each customer class use the service in each of those buckets? And so we allocate it once to the function, and then to the customer, and that is how you end up with your cost of service rates. So, here's that first allocation, from the revenue requirement to the functions, it sums to a little over $8 million, remember, this is an annual figure, and it's mostly in base capacity, meaning average water use, and then the second highest is in peak capacity, which is your peak month of water use, but that is how the functional allocation shakes out. So now we have to allocate that to customer classes, and in order to do that, we have to find the most equitable way for each of those functions. So, let's take an example. For customers, we just saw that the customer cost is a little over $412,000, that is the customer slice of the total revenue requirement. So if we need to charge you just for being a customer, what is the most equitable way to allocate that to the customer base? Well, we think it's based upon the number of accounts, because you have one account per customer. So it turns out that you have a little over 5,500 residential accounts, of a total of close to 6,900 accounts, which is 80% for your single-family residential customer base. So it should therefore be no surprise that residential is going to bear 80% of that $412,000, which if we go to the next slide, you will see in that table below, in the first upper-left dollar figure of $330,000, that is exactly what happens. So we allocate, that's just one example of allocating by customer accounts, for meters and services, we allocate by meter service equivalents, base capacity, as I mentioned before, is average monthly water use, peak capacity is by peak monthly water use, and look at irrigation in that column, that's where irrigation tends to bear a lot of those costs for peak capacity, because they're heavy peak users. So where this all shakes out, for the cost of service for individual classes, is in that table excluding those final two columns off to the right. So for residential, once we do all of those allocations, those allocations sum to $2.6 million. You see where I'm looking? At the top of that total COS for residential. Oh, bless you. Nice, thank you. So now, to the right of that, we're showing you how your rates currently charge, and that's this $2.8 million, and so residential would actually have to drop back 5.4% to snap you to what we would consider perfect cost of service. And you see for each class, each class has their own individual result, where industrial and irrigation would need to go up upwards of 10% each to get to their ideal cost recovery. And just to be clear, what we're doing here is, we are getting to an overall increase of 3%, which is in the bottom right, which is what the revenue requirement told us we needed to get to. Now, you may be asking yourself at this point, do we really need to do this? And so, full disclosure, no, you do not have any legal requirement to get your rates to cost of service. There's a couple of good reasons to think about it. Number one is just the practical risk reduction aspect of it. Just doing an across-the-board rate increase would probably be fine if you had some assurance that the nature of your customer base was not going to change significantly, but if you are unsure if the mix of customers is going to, whether they're going to stay stable, you would want to make sure that the customers, the types of customers, are paying their fair share of the costs that they are imposing on the system. And if you're doing that, you don't have to worry as much about if more of them show up, or if some of them go away, because if you're charging them the right price, the right amount of money should show up. Does that make sense, what I'm saying there? So that is a practical risk mitigation benefit of using cost of service, and it also helps you answer the question to the public, gosh, have you looked at, is this rate structure fair? And so we're looking at a very basic equity issue here. Having said all that, your rates are just not that far from true cost of service, and so, so there it is. We recommend getting there, but, you know, it's not a huge jump. However, even though it's not a huge jump, we have a way of making it an even less of a jump with an implementation strategy. The genesis of this idea of an implementation, it's a four-year phase-in, is as rate consultants, we are loathe to recommend an actual rate decrease, as you see in the residential class. We think it is better for your customer base to get habituated to gradual inflationary increases in their rates, because that is the typical behavior of your costs. If you have rates that get jerked up and down, the costs are still going to continue to rise, but I've seen clients have a large increase, and they say, well, thank goodness we got through that, and then they let their rates stay the same for years, and they let it go so long that they need another big increase, and that's painful for everybody. And so, instead of actually sending rates down, we advocate for a limited period of 0% changes for three years for residential, and then we start ramping them up in the fourth year. Meanwhile, everybody else is getting an appropriate change that gets them closer to cost of service, and they will land at cost of service within those four years. Did I see a question? Please.
Who is irrigation?
That was my question, too.
So those are customers that are watering stuff outside.
Separate meters.
Yes.
A lot of our commercial accounts, HOAs, when you have an irrigation meter, you don't have to pay for sewer charges. If you were using your water hose that's connected to your house, you would be paying sewer charges as well for the usage, so it's...
So are most of them HOAs?
It's, they're all, it's all over. We don't have too many residential customers, but mainly commercial and industrial.
How many accounts? How many irrigation accounts?
I think I have that information, 425.
So like at Villableau?
Yes.
How many irrigation meters are there?
778 meter service equivalents, so that's, there's a multiplication involved in that. It would be 425, right?
Yeah.
It could be anybody with an irrigation meter, it could be a homeowner.
It could be.
If they have a separate...
Villableau would be, because they don't do that.
But they have to pay a monthly fee and stuff, so, and plus, they had five meter.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's more commercial and...
So irrigation is kind of layered on top of all those others, it's not the same as those others. Everybody's paying the irrigation, everybody who's part, anyway. No one is paying only irrigation.
Right, that's correct.
Yes, but they do have specific meters just for irrigation.
Right, right.
If you were a business owner and you had a large landscaping to take care of, you would do the calculus about whether you wanted a separate irrigation meter, if you just wanted to use your main meter, the same meter that gives you potable water inside, you would be able to avoid those higher rates, but there is going to come with that, the assumption that all that water is going down the drain into the sewer system, and so you're going to pay sewer on that. Likewise, with irrigation meters, there is no assumption that that is going into the sewage system, that's just going into the ground.
On that previous slide with the pie charts and the graph on the bottom, yeah, so residential, you have there, for current cost recovery, a negative 5.4, and then you go down to irrigation, and you have 10.4, so those of us that live in Villableau, would we potentially see our homeowners association rate jump up, so we actually still see an increase?
It depend on the mix of irrigation meters.
So like, everybody in Villableau, and probably in Meadows, where there's HOAs?
Well, it would depend, because if you're talking about the regional parks, several of those are now city facilities.
But in our HOAs, every one of our lawns, sprinklers turn on.
Right, that would be different.
And that's irrigation, and so our HOAs pay for the watering of much of these neighborhoods, and so you significantly spike it there, but we still see a significant increase automatically, because we're going to pay it through our HOAs. Is that...
So...
Am I wrong, unless I'm, I could be wrong, I'm just, that's my question.
Well, it all depends on what your proportionate shares rates, you would win on your personal water bill, and you would essentially transfer some of that to your HOA responsibility, if that makes sense.
Yes.
It still goes up, yes, so the answer is yes, yeah.
But also, if I may, I think I'm looking at this chart correctly, there at the table, so we're seeing like, a decrease of 5.4%, increase of 10%, you're probably thinking adding 5%, right? If you did the 10%, right? But if you look, if you compare, because that's a percent of the total cost, it's not, you can't do that 10 minus 5. Like, you'd have to look at the actual numbers difference, right? So we're looking at the 2.6 million goes to the 2.7, or the 2.5 goes to 2.3, and then it becomes much closer to being a wash, too, if, right? So, did that make sense?
I understand that, and I totally get that, I just, they're not, homeowners are not going to get a full 5.4 reduction in their water rates, and that's kind of what that looks like, and they very well may say some increase of some type on their HOA bills. Some of them are already expensive.
But I think that also goes back to the 3%, like, right, we have to get to a 3%?
That's overall.
Like, overall, we got to get to that 3% in order to pay for all those projects that are coming up.
But it varies a lot around city, because a lot of people are not in an HOA.
Exactly, exactly.
Or their HOA is, like, Parker Maryfield is $75 a year or something, it's pretty little, because they maintain very little common area. But Villableau and others maintain almost everything as common area, but...
Charbonneau like that as well?
No, well, Charbonneau's irrigating out of the Malamite.
Oh, there you go.
So it's not an issue for Charbonneau. But another way to look at this, it would seem to me, is, aside from it varies by homeowner or by neighborhood, is you could take that irrigation slice of the pie away and distribute it. I mean, that would be an interesting thing to see, because irrigation is all being paid for by one of those other pieces of the pie, and all those other pieces of the pie would be bigger, and irrigation would go away, and then you'd see, you know, kind of where...
So how would you weight it, when you distribute it?
Well, it would just say, irrigation is either residential, multifamily, industrial, or commercial, and it's in one of those, you know, it would be a different way of making the pie, that would show you who's actually paying it.
So you're dispersing it over a bigger...
Now, I don't know which household is paying it, but residential is paying a big chunk of, huge chunk in Villableau.
So just to contribute to the discussion, because this is an excellent conversation, what I'm hearing is maybe an impulse toward protecting irrigation, which I completely understand. I do want to point out, there is a cost-based reason for singling them out. If you will look in the final column here, this is how we allocate the costs related to peak capacity, irrigation is responsible for a whole lot of peak usage. That means that that customer class has a disproportionate influence on the kind of water production capacity, and therefore projects that the city needs.
You do not need to tell me this.
Okay.
I was here for the water moratorium.
Okay.
I know what peak days are and peak capacity is, and I know that it drives your rates and it drives your plant, and it drives your capital expenditures, and irrigation is what drives that.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I mean, it's good for us all to, but that, I was not confused about.
And, I don't know, Councilor Leehan, I can already, and this is how it's, this conversation is going to automatically, to our constituents, bring up this question. There is a perception by many that the water rates would be decreasing because of our investment in the plant. You know way more about this topic than almost anybody with your influence on it, but now we're talking about an increase, I can already see emails coming in, and they may not be correlating, we're totally apples and apples here, but that's the perception. You say increase, and people are like, what do you mean increase? Of any kind, they're going to say, we thought we invested in a water plant, the city is going to have a benefit to that, and our rates will go down, and today we're talking about an increase. There is that conversation that happens.
Well, certainly, the city never presented that they would go down, we presented that they would not go up as fast, and...
I think that's been true.
And that's been true, compared to other cities.
But we also have some massive capital improvements to carry out.
Capacity-related.
Yeah.
It's a capacity issue.
And mostly, what was presented at the time was, was that we would have control like this. We would have control, rather than just getting a notice from Bull Run, from the city of Portland, that your rates are now this, and you have no capacity to change that, so we can decide on our capital.
I think that's important messaging.
Yes.
I just think that's important messaging, because I could just hear after this end, like, what are you talking about? I can just, that's why I brought it up, so...
But it still is worth always, for rates, for water conservation, the big one is irrigation, and it is still worth, I mean, this is one of the problems with a place like Villableau, where you have a homeowners association which removes you from the pain of watering your lawn. So take a look at the Parker Maryfield, less than half of the lawns are green, are even green, because people just don't water them anymore. It is very expensive, it's $100, $200 a month to water your lawn, and Villableau, they are just green, green, green everywhere, everybody's front yard, everybody's median, everybody's every, everywhere, green, green, green. Well, that's expensive, and it's not only expensive for the individual, but they're removed... removed from it because it's part of the HOA, doesn't hit them every month, and, but it's expensive for the city, because your whole system has to be built around the peak day, and the peak day is always the big, you know, I mean, it's very predictable, which is why when we had the moratorium, we had odd, odd even watering days, you could only water, you know, your address, didn't go with your address. You could water on even days or odd days, but not the both, and stuff like that, because we were trying to smooth out the peak day, otherwise everybody waters on Wednesday, or whatever it is. There's, you know.
A her mentality.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so that whole scenario that I hear you describe, I think is accurate, Council Leehan, but to me, that also indicates that we should not talk about distributing irrigation to everybody in the city. Therefore, I mean, everybody in the city, you know, many people have a choice of whether they will irrigate or not irrigate, and to say, well, you get to pay your share of everybody's irrigation, well, wait a minute, maybe I don't want to.
I certainly was not suggesting that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, it is such a driver, not, not only for the individual, but for the whole city system, the peak day, because you have to build your whole system for the peak day. That's, otherwise, that your fire, you can't meet your fire, fire flow requirements, and your insurance ratings will go through the roof, and, and it's not a good thing. Tuolton has been up against it. So the, getting the peak day down is, is worthwhile for the whole city, and benefits everyone, whether they're watering their lawn or not, and, and I don't know, and, and once we got out of the water shortage thing, our water conservation efforts kind of evaporated, as we say.
What a standard.
And we haven't put any effort into getting those irrigation rates, you know.
Hey, Tim.
So, so, yeah, we're going to be running short of time here. There still are some, probably some discussion to have on this.
We have time.
We have time?
We have time. Not right now.
Not on this.
If there's more questions, and more information from staff, we can, we can.
Just one last thing, so I'm not misunderstood here. When I was saying you could take that irrigation piece away and distribute it across all those other pieces of pie, it was more like to say, who, where is it mostly? So is it, is it industrial, commercial that is irrigating like crazy, and residential not very much, or, or the opposite? You know, if we were trying to do a conservation program or something, we would want to know that, but irrigation is off living somewhere all by itself, as if it didn't belong to one of those other pieces, and it does belong to some.
We can drill down further on those accounts.
So you just want to break down a.
And give you a percentage of those accounts.
Just so you get a better idea what the.
It just occurs to me, it's not that I came with a list of what I want, it just occurs to me that it's.
But the takeaway for this is, do you generally agree with the rate profile, and do you have any issues or questions, or further questions about the cost of service analysis? It is the most transparent, equitable way to, to do business, and most of the cities around us have a cost of service profile, so those are the two kind of takeaways for, for this discussion that we.
The other question that I would like to ask, if we had time to talk, would be, you know, if we were able to do more aggressive conservation work, like we did during the, the water moratorium, you know, would it affect our long-term capital requirements in a way that would ease the overall?
It would be really hard to predict that, Mayor. I mean, if you really wanted to send some price signals, I'm sure we could come up with some rate profile that would discourage water use, yes, but I don't know what the pinch point is for each customer class. I think what we're trying to do is design a rate system and build a water system that meets what Council Leehan said, which is the hottest day in August. And so there's some things that we just don't know. But I think getting to a point where our rates are reflective of who's driving those capital improvements is probably the best thing we can do.
It does seem equitable.
It's kind of a different thing, the conservation piece, and yet it ties into rates. And, and I would say that, and I, this is my deal with PGE, the next thing also is, you know, the, the cheapest water is the one you don't use. The cheapest water is the one you don't.
I agree with that.
Don't own the lawn. So, so if conservation isn't a piece of the thing, then, then it's kind of specious.
Well, I could, what I could say is that if, if we do determine that this, this new rate system is saving water, we're not having to produce as much, then the timing of those capital improvements aren't going to happen as soon as we think they are, right? So we wouldn't need to make those expenditures, and we would not need to increase rates as quickly as we're projecting we need to do right now.
Really quick, as I, I just know for, there, I don't know why in some of these HOAs, we are in the broad daylight at four in the afternoon watering lawns, and not doing in the evening, and why there's puddles that are around, all around the sidewalk. That's bad conservation by HOAs, and, and irrigation is bad, and so it's, and it's wasteful. And so maybe a way to help curb some of these expenses is to do some type of conservation, like outreach, let's say, and work with HOAs, and really as a city saying, we really want to be leaders in water conservation, and we could see those numbers go down without increasing anybody's rates.
I don't know if we'll get to, I don't know if we'll get to that point.
Cook over to a boardroom and say, hey, whatever.
And last green, every like, like all those looks around the table.
We, we could pick out a lot of things for consumer behavior.
It sounded really good, though.
Okay.
The point was conservation.
What do you, what do you need from us?
Well, it sounds like we need to come back, so we'll get a time to come back. On top of the cost of service analysis, we're also looking at a proposed rate structure change for residential. As I mentioned earlier, Munis does not like the way that we currently do our, our water for residential customers, so we're looking at suggesting a tiered rate, which is more in line with the conservation efforts, and it's, you know, Hillsborough, Lake Oswego, West Lynn, Milwaukee, Oregon City, Quackmish River Water, you know, just about everybody uses that type of system. So I'll make another appointment for an appearance, we'll come back, we'll start here on this particular page, and try to work our way through it. Right now, we're looking at probably an implementation date of July fir, I mean, January first.
So we have time.
So we have time. We do do a pretty comprehensive notification of customers, that's going to be impacted. We like to send out letters, try to do as much as we can beforehand, so as much time as we can have, of course, the better.
Especially our bigger customer accounts.
Especially if we're raising commercial and industrial rates, we do need to let those customers who will be impacted by that.
Okay.
We'll be back.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And we have just a few minutes to do our PGE Green Future Tariff Program.
We may have to carry on some of this downstairs, so maybe just hit the highlights.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm Zoe Monahan, Assistant to the City Manager. I don't know how this works. Is that on? Okay, thank you. And this evening, we are continuing our conversation about the Green Future Impact Program with PGE, that you spoke with PGE about back in May. And this evening, I have Josh Halli with me as well to answer some of your questions. So as you'll recall, this is an opportunity to participate in the Green Tariff Program that they're offering, which is a new renewable energy facility that's not yet being constructed. It will be solar, and the new facility will be located in Oregon. Based on a fifteen-year commitment, it would be one dollar per megawatt hour. So this is our current power usage, so our basic power includes about fifteen percent renewable energy, and we also use.
Excuse me, hour being the city municipality?
I apologize. The city of Wilsonville, our power usage as an organization. We, with that basic power, PGE already includes fifteen percent renewable energy. We also use the clean wind, and we increased, we added that in 2015. So we use about twenty-three percent renewable energy in our energy mix today for our nearly thirteen million kilowatt hours of power use. So if you look at the table on the bottom, this will look familiar from the last time that Mr. Halli was here. The light blue is the basic power mix, or regular power, and the green is the Green Tariff Program, and the blue, dark blue in the middle is clean wind. So you can see in this table, if the city wanted to be a hundred percent renewable in 2021, when the Green Tariff Program goes into effect, we would use our, the base power mix, we would need to increase our clean wind, and then there would be, this table includes fifty-five percent of the Green Tariff. The reason for that is that at the year 2025, when PGE is up to forty-five percent of renewable energy within their power mix, then we would be at a hundred percent renewable energy with the Green Tariff Program. So basically, it comes down to how sustainable do we want to be in 2035, 2040, when there's that forty-five percent renewable energy within the basic mix? And we've, we've got this option, the fifty-five percent option, which we'll share in just a moment, as well as options for fifty and thirty percent. So as I mentioned previously, we currently use eight percent clean wind. So the options would be, do we want to stay at that level, or do we want to increase the amount of clean wind in order to be at a hundred percent renewable energy sooner than when we would hit that, in theory, fifty-five percent with the clean Green Tariff, and the renewable energy mix that will be provided within the basic power mix that's provided? So if you look at the red numbers, the two tables, you have a hundred percent renewable, this is using the fifty-five percent Green Tariff, you can see that over time, the basic mix of renewables, or your basic power, that percentage of renewable energy increases over time, and that will be the same for all of these scenarios. And that what will change is the Green Tariff on this page to the next few slides, as well as the amount of clean wind. So in the a hundred percent renewable, you can see there's an increase in clean wind in 2020, and then it decreases over time as the amount of renewables within the base mix increases. On the table below, it shows what it would look like with the eight percent clean wind that we already use, and it shows how we would gradually get closer to a hundred percent renewable energy. At the bottom, you have the additional costs that would come with these options, so whether keeping the same level of clean wind and going to the fifty-five percent Green Tariff, or increasing that clean wind to get us to a hundred percent renewable sooner. So, and then this is the fifty percent option. Again, the change within this table is the Green Tariff, as well as the amount of clean wind that we would need to purchase in order to get us to a hundred percent. And it looks like in this table, I'm missing the five percent in 2035. But you can see how the annual amount is a little higher at the beginning in the hundred percent renewable, because you'd be purchasing more clean wind, and then it decreases over time. And then with the eight percent on this one, it's a little bit lower at the offset. Again, with the thirty percent, you can see the increase of clean wind, the increase in cost at the beginning, and how it tapers over time. These are a few cities that are participating in the amount of kilowatt hours, which is one kilowatt hour is a thousand megawatt hours. So this is the percentage, is that correct?
Other way around.
Oh. Flip-flop that.
Okay, bye, guys.
So these are a few cities that are participating in the amount of megawatt hours that they are participating with. There are a few more cities, Salem, Portland, as well as Washington County and Multnomah County, that are also participating in the program. So really, the question for you this evening is, what percentage of renewable energies should the city be using, and what percentage of Green Tariff should the city purchase? And I will lean to Mr. Halli as well with any specific questions that I cannot answer.
I, if I could just maybe add to that a little bit? So Zoe did an awesome job of putting together a lot of different options, and I worry it may be like overwhelming with spreadsheets. She, she did good work. What you guys expressed interest in, when we expressed interest back in May, was fifty-five percent of your load that would get you to a hundred percent renewable by the end of the term, the fifteen-year term on the, the Green Tariff. So that would be twenty thirty, sorry, twenty thirty-five, you would essentially be at a hundred percent renewable. So, so that's what you guys expressed interest for, that's what we held a spot for you on. If you decide to reduce that amount, then we will see if we can find somebody to backfill the position that you, that you decide that you don't want. That's not an issue, but that is what you expressed interest in. And I say from, currently, you're, you're supporting the Clean Wind Program, so you essentially have two toggles, like, one, do you want to do the Green Tariff at the fifty-five percent, or some amount less than that? The second question is, do you want to increase your Clean Wind purchase to get you to a hundred percent today, and maintain that hundred percent status through 2035, or do you want to get to a hundred percent in 2035? Is essentially the decision that you kind of have at your, at your disposal right now. And we would be thrilled to be the solution for you, regardless of what your, your plans and your, your options you decide on are. And I guess the only other thing, after working with lots of cities and observing behavior, I know you all care about what other cities are doing and where they're at, and, and certainly that's not the only reason to make a decision, but it is important, and, and generally, what we've seen from all the cities and counties that we're, we're seeing participating, you guys are the last city that hasn't decided yet, so I can speak confidently with what everyone else decided to do, and that's because of extenuating circumstances, is essentially lock in at that fifty-five percent number, because our basic service amount is going to ramp up to forty-five percent renewable within the lifespan of this product, get them to a hundred percent, and then they're backfilling with clean wind. Pretty much what you're seeing on the second chart there is what I've seen as very consistent behavior from the cities and counties that we're working with. And the chart that would correlate with that from a cost standpoint would be that top chart right there. So to give you an idea of what your cost would be, your total annual premium goes down every five years as the amount in your basic service that is coming from renewables increases due to our RPS law in Oregon. So, so that top scenario is the most, you know, gets you to a hundred, and looks probably the most like what I've seen from other cities, but really, you guys are in control, you can pick whatever percentages you so desire. It's easier to market and tell your constituents a hundred percent than it is eighty-three percent, having done this a few times, but that's, you know, it's also very compelling to have a very locked-in, set plan to get to a hundred percent, if you're not there today, but we know we will be on this date. Both very effective messages that we've seen, you know, companies and cities use, so.
Well, this is a policy question, really, as much as it is a budget question. Personally, it doesn't sit too good with me to say, oh, by 2035, we'll.
We'll be there.
We'll be there. That's a long ways out there. I'd like to see us, you know, commit to a hundred percent renewables in a much shorter term than that. Is the fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty cents an accurate annual representation of what it would cost us in addition to what we're currently?
Based on today's billing.
Right, right.
It is, and it's worth noting that right now, you pay about thirty-one hundred a year for clean wind, so it'd actually only be like a twelve thousand seven hundred increase over what.
And that's for the cost every department.
Correct.
So it's a thousand bucks a month more than we're doing. I mean, right?
I'm just going to check out here, I think you got this.
It's, why is, I thought wind was always clean, but why is wind?
Marketing.
Yeah, I, I don't remember it ever doing any CO2 emissions, but why, why is it phased out? Is it because it's not stable? But it, but like, it talks about, like, you have same with clean wind, and then without clean wind, why is clean wind, that little part of the graph, go away? Why is it not part of the mix?
It's part of the basic mix. So best way to explain that, to build up this, so let's just look at the bottom chart here. The light blue, that is mandated, we are required by state law, the renewable portfolio standard, that we must provide by 2040, fifty percent of our basic mix has to come from renewables. So you're getting that, regardless.
It's in there.
It's, it's going to happen, we're on a set schedule, the steps up, where you see the light blue increase over time, those are regulated mandated steps that by 2025, we must be twenty-seven percent renewable, bumps up to thirty-five percent in 2030, and so on.
What's in that mix?
That is, all accepted renewable is defined in the legislation.
Hydro, gas.
Low-impact hydro, not large, not, not large hydro, but low-impact hydro, there's a distinction between the two. Solar, winds, geothermal, low, and biomass, those are your six of five.
Okay.
And not wind?
Wind was in there, if I didn't say it. Wind, solar. Wind, solar, geothermal, biomass, and low-impact hydro. So that's kind of the found...
What is low-impact hydro?
Uh, low-impact hydro is a hydro facility that has been run through a rigorous set, best way to talk about it is like the organic certification of hydro. They look at fish passage, water quality at the end, at the bottom of the facility, impact to the ecosystem and area, size of reservoir created by the facility, all those things kind of factor together. And you either get a low-impact hydro institute certification or you do not.
What, what would you describe as one? What, what's an example?
Um, so some examples would be, say, Bonneville or the Dowell Dam, not. Dams on the Clackamas are. So PGE has multiple low-impact hydro facilities in its holdings that are on the Clackamas River, so...
Malama Falls Logs?
Uh, no, it is not. And then, I don't know if I could give you, rattle off a list off the top of my head here in the area, but there are a handful of them. If you're a large, you know, sort of old-school hydro facility, you're not necessarily creating renewable energy certificates that can be purchased through a product like this. The, the RPS, there was a debate about that, you know, should you count large hydro or not? If they counted large hydro, they would have set a goal of 75% by 2040. So it ultimately comes down to kind of semantics of whether you include what was already existing or not. The intention of the renewable portfolio standard was to drive new behavior and new activity, and so counting facilities that were built 40 years ago wasn't, you know, seen as in the spirit of driving new activity.
So where's solar on this?
Uh, so, on this, this isn't really looking at resource types. This is just looking at three, three different solutions to get you to 100% renewable. So I can tell you the Green Tariff portion, just to kind of, to, to back up to what, what all three of these parts are. You've got your light blue, the RPS is your foundation. That's gonna happen anyway. The Green Tariff purchase, which is in the sort of yellow-green color, that has to be a finite fixed amount per year, because you're buying a percentage of a finite fixed facility. And we have other customers and cities that wanna buy a piece of it as well. So it can't fluctuate up and down every year with your usage. It's one of the pieces of the product that just isn't as flexible. So what we advise and what we think is a smart play is to not buy any more than 55% from the Green Tariff. Set your finite fixed amount based on 55% of your load today. The other 45% at the end of that term will be coming from basic service, and you're not paying anything extra for that amount. So the reason that clean wind phases out isn't really, has anything to do with clean wind itself, it's just that that is the third piece of the pie that fills in the wedge and makes you 100% throughout. The other feature of including clean wind in your portfolio solutions is that clean wind is flexible. You can ratchet your purchase up and down every year. You never know how much power you're gonna use until the end of December. And so then you can finite, you know, land on a dime, be 100% renewable that year, not spend any more money than you need to. And as RPS content ramps up, you don't need as much of that clean wind solution, so you're ramping that down. It's also the most expensive part of the solution here, so you're saving money every time that clean wind piece...
So what's the council interested in doing?
I have, I know we're out of time, I have a few more questions, but I don't know if we could, those could come up in the meeting downstairs and...
You're gonna be around for the council meeting?
Well...
So I think we could continue the discussion downstairs.
Yeah, that would be good.
Ah. Right. Okay. We are due downstairs then, so we'll call a work session over at 7:00, and we will meet downstairs as fast as we can get there.